Half the little ones we used to throw in the air. They're airplane. We must be down to seconds here.
Five twenty-nine.
Yeah, that's true. How does that say?
Yeah, I mean, I figure that's, but it's not the way, and my biggest problem with it is enforcement. How are you ever gonna know? But I mean, Joe Seaton is pretty concerned.
One of us did the right thing.
Yeah, well, you know, as I said, I mean, you gotta like.
Start meeting with the bleding legions.
My bleding legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Danker, will you do the roll call, please?
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
King.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item one is a motion for adoption of the agenda.
With addition.
With additions, so move.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Item two is a motion approving the minutes from April sixteenth, two thousand eight. Need a motion?
So move.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Under recognition and awards, Discover Austin Annual Report, Nancy Schnebel.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. As I do every year during Tourism Week, I will be presenting our annual report. I believe that they went out in the packets.
Yes.
So you've got those in front of you, and I'm gonna start with a quote that's on the front page. It all starts with the visit. If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. And if you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people have to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where business wants to be. And if you build a place where business wants to be, you'll have built a place where people want to visit. And that is from a fellow colleague in Irving, Texas Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you turn to the next page, you will see some highlights from two thousand seventeen, and you can read it. I'll just highlight the really important parts. In two thousand seventeen, Austin was nominated and was in the top ten finalists for Best Minnesota Town. And after a lot of community support and voting, we ended up in the top five finalist. And then a little bit further down the page, you will see that buses tend to keep us very busy. We had over five thousand visitors this year that arrived by bus, and they made Austin, Minnesota their vacation destination. And we estimated the economic impact of those five thousand visitors to be over six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and that just came from the motor coach bus segment of visitors. Besides the bus tours, the Spam Museum also welcomed nearly a hundred and fifteen thousand people in two thousand seventeen. And with our goal of promoting Austin outside of the Austin area to potential visitors, partnerships in promoting played a big part in our success in two thousand seventeen. And you can find more details there on all the partnerships that we built throughout two thousand seventeen. On the next page, you will find our Board of Directors and Staff, and there's some familiar faces in the audience and on the council. So thank you for all that you guys do. On page five, you will find some impressive numbers. If you look at our weekly newsletter distribution, you will see that it had an increase year over year of four hundred and sixty-three subscribers. And the social media, which we have three platforms, we have Twitter, we have Facebook, and we have Instagram. Facebook increased year over year by one thousand three hundred and forty-eight followers. But the most impressive thing that we found in two thousand seventeen was our website traffic. It had a year-over-year increase of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and forty-four visitors. And so we were pretty impressed with the way that our Facebook has turned out for two thousand seventeen. On page six and seven, it will show you the Minnesota Leisure and Hospitality Economic Impact by County. And for Mauer County, which, as you can imagine, Austin plays a big part in, the leisure and hospitality gross sales were over fifty-two million, and the private sector employment is over twelve hundred. The back page has some highlights for two thousand eighteen calendar events. So there's a lot of things going on in Austin, and these are just what we could fit on the page. So you can check out our website for all the listings. Some of the other positive promotions in two thousand eighteen that we will be doing include billboards. We will have them in Mason City, Fort Dodge, and Marshalltown, Iowa. And we have some city buses that will have Austin ads on them in Duluth, Rochester, and La Crosse. And if you happen to fill up your gas station today or any time in the next week with the little TV ads that are on there, you will see that Austin has an ad on gas station TV at thirty-one gas stations throughout the Midwest. As I mentioned earlier, it is National Tourism Week, and every year, we do a Be a Tourist in Your Own Hometown Challenge. This year, you'll find in your packet the Be a Tourist in Your Own Hometown Experience the ABCs of Austin. We are challenging you to visit a retail business or restaurant in Austin, Minnesota that starts with each letter of the alphabet. So participants must visit at least twenty different Austin, Minnesota retail businesses or restaurants between May fifth and June fifteenth for a chance to get the grand prize. The grand prize is a hundred and fifty dollars worth of Chamber Bucks. First place is a hundred dollars worth of Chamber Bucks, and second is fifty dollars worth of Chamber Bucks. Thank you for listening, and do you have any questions?
What are these cookie things here?
The cookies are Spam cookies. We do a lot of trade shows. When you read through the partnerships, we do a lot of trade shows, and that is our trade show giveaway. And we have given away thousands of cookies. At one trade show, we gave away three thousand alone. So they are highly requested, and they seem to do a quite, a great job promoting the Spam Museum and all things in Austin.
I just wanna say thank you. Great job and some very impressive numbers.
Yep, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Nancy, is the lodging tax your sole revenue source?
Primarily. We do have some, like, the Hormel Foundation will help us every once in a while, but that's primarily where we get our funding from.
So have you ever calculated an ROI on that? About a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year?
Right, right, so.
And the impact that you're having, I mean, just with a hundred and sixty-six groups alone, I would think would be more than the lodging tax.
Right, and those are just, a hundred and sixty-six is just the motor coach groups. So we also do promoting for the Leisure Traveler, which, you know, like, the Spam Museum had a hundred and fifteen thousand. And then we also do a lot of promoting for conferences to bring in those groups into the conference center and meetings into Austin as well. So our ROI is pretty good on the lodging tax that we do get.
And is there anything more that you need from us as a city?
I mean, I think. That's a great question.
I think we're leveraging those tax dollars awfully well.
Right, right. There's always more that we can do. So if we had more funds, there's obviously more that we can do, but we try to do the best with what we have right now, so.
Nancy, do you have the Spam Museum numbers?
They had a hundred and fifteen for two thousand seventeen. A hundred and fifteen thousand visitors for two thousand seventeen.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
And that compares to what?
They had about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand the year before in two thousand sixteen, but they didn't open up until April, so.
And compared to the old location, was twenty-five, thirty thousand a year?
It was a little more than that, but towards, it started off really strong in the beginning and then kinda dwindled down, you know, as we got closer to closing, and I think we're seeing the same thing where it starts off really strong, and then eventually it'll start to go down a little bit. That's why we're trying to do Spam cookies and bring more awareness to it as well in unique ways.
It's been a big success.
It has. It's great for Austin.
Nancy, what kind of response do you get from the downtown businesses? You know, obviously, hopefully, they're benefiting, you know, people are gonna go have lunch or go shop or.
Right. For a lot of, like, our motor coach buses, we allow time to be at the Spam Museum, but then we also allow them time to go explore downtown. And so we will give them a map that includes, like, Ride Your Bike, the Artwork Center, Sweet Reed, some of their restaurants. Some of those motor coach buses have planned meals, but if they don't, then they can go visit any of those restaurants within walking distance. And we can give them a map and a list of those as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, well, thank you, Nancy.
Awesome, thank you.
Good job. And next, we have Mr. Bill Spitzer, who is gonna talk to us about Positively Austin APAC Awards.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Clark, thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. It's a way that we can recognize several individuals in the Austin community. So just briefly, what are the Positive Austin Awards? The Positively Austin Community Award was developed to honor people within the Austin community for their significant positive contributions to the youth and others in our community for their time, action, talents, and dedication. The honoree selected was served as a role model for compassion, service, and is striving to make the world a better place. So this is just kind of a way to recognize people in the Austin community that are doing some positive things for not only our young people, for just the community in general. So we did have three individuals, and I believe Councilman King is gonna kinda introduce one of them. But we have three of them in our audience today, Mr. Jim Yiparilly, Rilla, excuse me, Chris Lucas, and Deborah Schmidt. So I'll just briefly talk about Jim. Jim's my candidate. They're nominated by members of the Austin Positive Action Coalition for their involvement in the community. Jim is a big volunteer in the Austin community, especially around Fountain Center and other recovery organizations, and has donated a lot of his time to do that. And he is also an individual that has experienced the difficulties that he's had in recovery and knows that it's important to have volunteers to support others, and he has dedicated a lot of his personal time to do that. So Jim, thank you very much. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, they're gonna be given keys to the city, right?
Right. I have three keys for three people, for keys for the city. I think we've done this last year, and if they would like to just, I don't know if you wanna present them or if they wanna come up here.
Mr. Mayor, they're your keys. I told them, I told them that they couldn't lose them, otherwise they have to change all the locks.
Why don't you, you know, just introduce them and have them come up one at a time?
Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Jim. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Now you're gonna have to backtrack.
Yeah, go all the way.
Backwards.
That, that end of the. Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, I get to do two introductions. One of our people that did the nominees was ill today. So the second person that I'm going to introduce, she's an individual that has worked very hard in our community to do a lot of awareness to bring forth some issues that we've been struggling with in not only the Austin community, but also region-wide and actually nationwide, and that's the opiate addiction. And she put together on her own time with a number of other people in the Austin community, three town hall events that were set up to kind of bring awareness to the opiate crisis that we're in right now. And this is an individual that has spent a lot of her personal time to do that. Not only that, but she also has dedicated a lot of her time to an organization called the Circle of Hope. And that is in addition to the things that she does for the Positive Action Coalition. So Chris Lucas.
Thank you, Chris. There you go. Key. Thank you.
Good job.
I just wanna say before Mr. King probably embarrasses his coworker that I just wanna say that these Positive Action Coalition Awards are very important, and I know it's getting difficult even after a year and a half that I've spent in the Austin community because there's just so many people that are doing some positive things in Austin for our young people and others. So thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Thank you.
Steve?
Thanks, Bill. This never gets old. Deborah Schmidt, Deborah Schmidt is a probation officer that's basically turning red here very shortly. And I happen to be very fortunate in Moore County Corrections to have eight excellent probation officers that do a great job there every day. Deborah stands out particularly because there's not a lot of folks in the whole state that I can ever think of or worked with where past offenders that are no longer on supervision continue to come back regularly to meet with Deborah because that's the kind of support she gives these people. She's excellent with our addicts. I give her a ton of them, and she uses some great creative, I don't know, I guess some creativity in how she deals with these addicts. And what she has done is earned their trust and earned their respect, and that's why they continue to come back even when they're not on supervision. So Deborah was nominated for this award because she started through some former offenders and some current offenders where they come back every Friday for fun and games and coffee and whatever else they might serve or have in our office. So to get folks to come to our office willingly generally is not really easy. But Deborah, again, she establishes these relationships with these gals. This is the group that she has now is a female group of former and current offenders that are struggling with their addiction or kind of are over the hump of their addiction and can help those that are currently in the throes of addiction. So she does an outstanding job. And with her today is her husband, Ed. Ed is also a probation officer in our office, one of eight, as I mentioned, a quality individual. And their two daughters, we got Audra and Lauren. Maybe you guys wanna stand up and be on TV. So this is all, you know, all this work gets done, and dealing with people in crisis as Ed and Deborah do is never easy. But then to be a parent and volunteer, Ed coaches, Deborah works the Y. These are all, these are excellent community people. So I can't imagine a more deserving person than Deborah to be getting this award just for her creative approach to probation. It's not always about just putting people in jail by any means, so she does a, does a great job keeping folks positive. So congratulations, Deborah Schmidt.
I've known Deborah. Deborah's dad and me started the same day on the police department, nineteen seventy-six, November. So I've kinda seen her grow up over the years, haven't I?
You have.
I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah, for all you do.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you.
Good job.
Bill, I wanna thank you and everybody in your coalition, which I'd be wearing my shirt today except, oh, I don't have a shirt 'cause you don't have my size yet. But thanks for what you do. I think you've made a big improvement in our community, and I wanna thank the three recipients tonight. It's people like that that make us what we are, really, so. Thank you. Thank everybody. And we're not gonna force you to stick around for the rest of the meeting if you don't want to, because it gets a little boring after this. But if you wanna learn about city government, stick around. But anyway, thank you guys a lot. All right, number four is the, we need a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
Second. On favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Number five, under bid opening and awards. Number five is a resolution receiving bids for the construction of a pre-engineered cold storage building. Stephen, I don't know if you wanna handle them all right away or?
We'll just do one at a time if that's all right. This first one that you referenced is for a, pretty much just a pole shed to be constructed out of our public works facility. This will help us to consolidate some equipment that is stored in different areas around the community. It's not a heated building, that's why it's called a cold storage building. We will just put equipment and other materials in this building. We took bids with one option as part of the bid. Our base bid was for a seventy-by-eighty building and then an option for an additional twenty-foot addition. And with the way the prices have come in, with Raymond Construction being the low bidder with their base bid at eighty-eight thousand and an option for an additional twenty-two thousand, that fits within our budget. So we would recommend awarding the bid, the base bid and option to Raymond Construction.
Counsel, questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for five. So move.
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Six is a resolution receiving bids for southeast sector sanitary sewer televising.
This is part of our INI program, part of the Sump Pump Program that we've been talking about. It also includes evaluating our public infrastructure, and this is the first part of the public infrastructure evaluation, which is televising of all the sanitary sewer lines in the southeast quadrant. We took bids on this work, and you can see there are two alternates there, alternate A and alternate B. Alternate A had a November completion date, November of two thousand eighteen, and alternate B had a May of two thousand nineteen completion date. So just pretty much giving the contractor more time to complete the work and have it fit within their existing schedule, other work that they have in other towns and communities. And Hydro Clean was the low bidder with alternate A coming, excuse me, alternate B, the later completion date of May of two thousand nineteen coming in at a hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents. We would recommend awarding that alternate B, which is the most, the best option, most cost savings for the city, to hydro clean for this work.
Counsel? Nobody has any questions? We need a resolution, I suppose, either way, but so we'll move it forward. Mr. Danker?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher. Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution receiving bids for the wastewater transfer station. Backup to follow. Oh, that's our addition. Stephen?
Correct. As directed by council at a previous meeting, we have moved forward with taking bids for operation of the transfer station. And we kept everything very similar to what we presented to you previously, where some of the key points of the, of the operation would include a base six-year agreement with two, two-year options, so what could be a total of a ten-year agreement for operation of the transfer station. We continued with existing language related to tonnage, residential customer tipping fees, commercial hauler tipping fees, handling, demolition material, making sure that loads that come to the landfill are tarped and covered. We've added language in there for that to make sure that loads aren't, you know, you look at the location of the transfer station located on the other side of the airport. People either need to come down the interstate to get there, or they need to come on fifty-five mile an hour county roads. So we wanna make sure that those loads are tarped and secured, and we don't have junk blowing out on the way to the transfer station. Similarly, we have the same hours of operation for the public and also for commercial haulers. We've added that language of having four trailers on site to hopefully reduce delays for trailers that are full. Currently, there are typically three trailers on site, and we've kept that same language for four trailers on site. So with that, we received two bids. We received a bid from Waste Management and a bid from Y Waste Removal for the operation of the transfer station. The Waste Management bid started out for the first six years at a starting rate of forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and then it increased per year thereafter. Y Waste proposal started out at forty-five thousand dollars per year and then increased about a thousand dollars per year each year thereafter for the, for the length of the six-year base term. A couple things, a couple notes were mentioned in each bid as we received them. Waste Management added an addendum to their proposal requesting the contractor be allowed to increase the rates charged to customers by two percent per year. And Y Waste Removal submitted an alternate lease proposal for three years versus the six years of the base lease. But this proposal was lower than the Waste Management proposal. So all in all, Waste Management had, in this case, the highest bid. Normally, we're awarding the lowest bid, but in this case, for operation of the transfer station, Waste Management had the highest bid. So I would recommend approving an operational lease with Waste Management for the base six-year lease, including a yearly one-point-two-five percent increase. So Waste Management had requested a two percent increase to, per year for the tipping fees for commercial haulers. But I've talked with them, and we've brought that down to one-point-five percent. That's, that's been, looking back historically, back to about nineteen ninety-nine, has typically been the rate increase per year for disposal of waste at the transfer station. It's increased by about, actually, it's increased by about one-point-four percent. But in this case, we're looking at a one-point-two percent rate increase per year over the course of the six-year term. So those are all things that we've worked through the process of the public bidding standpoint, opening up for bidders. And then a few things were tweaked here at the end and to come up with this recommendation for the six-year lease to Waste Management.
Could you just speak a little bit about the option, option one and option two? Like, what will be your criteria for reviewing the way, the contract for either?
Yeah, it's, it's up to, for option one to occur, it would have to be upon agreement by both the city and the operator. So as Waste Management operates the facility for the next six years, if they look at their option one and the rates that they have proposed in the bid today, if they are satisfied with those rates and they're happy with how the trash business is going at that time, and if we're happy with their operation and the rates, we both mutually agree to extend it. And then that would, the same thing would then occur with option two as well. So it's upon mutual agreement by both parties.
Explain again, Stephen, I might have missed it. If Waste Management bids are higher than Y Waste, what was your reasoning for Waste Management recommendation?
This, this amount, that forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars is actually what the operator will reimburse the city to be able to operate the facility. So in this case, for the year starting July one, two thousand eighteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, Waste Management is proposing to reimburse the city forty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars as part of their proposal. And Y Waste was proposing to reimburse the city forty-five thousand dollars. So Waste Management's proposal is about a five-thousand-dollar increase to have the ability to operate and manage the facility.
I was a little confused on that, too. How do these figures compare to what they had originally offered before we opened this up for bids?
The Waste Management proposal is exactly what I had negotiated with them prior to opening up for bids. In the proposal that we sent out, we wanted to make sure that Waste Management or anyone didn't come back and provide really low bids like we had received a couple of years ago. So we put a bottom, a base bid in there, and we said we will not accept any other bids lower than forty-five thousand dollars per year. So I would assume that's why Y Waste chose that number and worked up from there, and then Waste Management used the numbers we had negotiated previously.
Okay, anybody else? If there's no further questions or comments, we need a resolution for item number seven.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petition and request, eight is a series of motions and ordinances reviewing a rental housing ordinance. Holly?
Your Honor and Council, I would also note that there is a resolution included with that regarding the fees associated with the rental housing ordinance. Wasn't added to the agenda, but.
Okay, I got a motion and ordinance and a resolution. You're correct.
Okay. The purpose and scope of the rental dwelling licenses are to assure that rental housing in the city of Austin is decent, safe, and sanitary, and is operated and maintained so as not to become a nuisance to the neighborhood, to become an influence, or to become an influence that fosters blight and deterioration or creates a disincentive for reinvestment in the community. The operation of residential rental properties is a business enterprise that entails certain responsibilities. Rental dwelling owners, agents, and property managers are responsible to take necessary reasonable actions to ensure that the persons who occupy such rental units as well as neighboring properties may pursue the quiet enjoyment of normal activities of life and surroundings that are safe, secure, and sanitary, free from noise, nuisances, and annoyances, free from unreasonable fears about safety of persons and property, and free of drugs and crime. And I won't go through the entire ordinance, but it is in the packet for your review. It is available online for the public if they choose to read through it. The rental dwelling units would not include university housing, rest homes, convalescent care, licensed group homes, hotels, or owner-occupied units. Licensing would be a one-year license, renewed annually. Inspections would be every two years. License fees are a hundred dollars per building and twenty dollars per unit. Delinquency fee is, would be proposed to be twenty percent of whatever the license fee was allocated. A reinspection fee of fifty dollars on registered rentals. This was discussed because we've had a rental registration ordinance in effect for a few years that that rate would be a five-hundred-dollar penalty if the properties are not registered at the time of the effective date of this rental licensing and inspection ordinance. Minimum licensing standards would require an application, current and accurate application, that the fees be paid, that they. require an application, current and accurate application, that the fees be paid, that the property be registered with utilities, they pay their taxes, assessments, all their claims due to the city, and that the rental dwelling is compliant with federal, state, and local laws. There are also provisions for provisional licenses, which would be to start our program as we roll it out. We have certain license requirements. Disorderly conduct would be prohibited on the property. That would be a portion of the ordinance that would primarily be enforced by the police department as well as the Crime Free Housing Program, which is a housing training program, which includes some requirements such as a written lease, crime-free addendum, background checks, and termination of tenants who violate the Crime Free Drug Free Lease provisions. We would also, there are also enforcement inspections. The inspections would be conducted by a city compliance officer as required by the ordinance. We would issue official orders in writing regarding failures to meet the requirements of the code and other law. And there are procedures regarding the enforcement as well as uninhabitable and hazardous structures. The effective date of the ordinance would be January first, two thousand nineteen. And then we have the, we had instruction that this should be our budget-neutral program, so the fees were estimated based on the current number of rental housing units that we have in the city of Austin. Currently, we have one thousand one hundred and forty-four registered buildings, and we have two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven units, which gives us a total estimated annual fee of one thousand sixty-nine, or one hundred sixty-nine thousand five hundred and forty dollars, the proposed budget of one hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. One, another issue that came up during some of the discussions was questions by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority about their publicly-owned or their public housing, and their inability to raise rates to cover the cost of the annual fees. That discussion led to an exemption of city inspection of HUD-inspected properties to minimize some of the repetition and some inconvenience to staff and tenants. Do you have any other specific, do you have any specific questions or anything you want to follow up on? We actually did have this at our work session on several occasions, and we had a committee that met together that made some recommendations to the council that were discussed many, on many occasions.
Judy, how many years have we been working on this?
Seven and a half.
Okay. This is a culmination of seven and a half years, so it's been very well thought through.
I have many questions.
What's that? We're not taking questions. This is, I can do it later, but let her finish her thing. We've had, you know how many meetings we've had on this?
You know what? Nobody sends anything to the people that own the properties. I think the law is most direct.
We'll take questions, all right? All right, we, listen, we'll take, I said we'll take questions. All right, we'll take some questions.
Okay. We have been working on this ordinance for about eight months in the last year, just this specific piece of the ordinance, as well as your comments that this has been in progress for about seven years. And we did pass a registered rental ordinance in two thousand fifteen, I believe it was, and we did send letters out to the people we had contact information for, but you know, I mean, we don't know who owns all the rental properties in the city, but this registration process has given us a better, you know, better opportunity to connect and communicate with the landlords in our city, so...
And we've worked with the Landlords Association on this. We've gone to their meetings. They've come, they've been represented at just about every city council meeting where we've discussed this. So, I mean, we've done everything we can to get the information out there. I will say, no matter what we do, and annexations, you know, when we get down to the final thing, people come to the meeting and say, "I have no idea this was going on," but we've done everything in our power to try and, you know, to get that information to you. Well, let me, I'll give you a second.
And thank you for mentioning the Landlords Association. I would really like to express my appreciation for all of the communication that we've been able to have back and forth, and that their input's been very helpful, and we did have a representative from the Landlord Association on our committee as well.
So we've tried, we've tried everything.
And we will work with them ongoing to as we implement the ordinance.
So that's actually what my question was going to be. I've seen some really good relationship building among landlords, especially those that have many properties, and the Landlord Association and the city, through this process, a lot of bridges have been built. It was pointed out to me that some of the things that were discussed at the meeting aren't represented in the ordinance itself. So for instance, there's a lot of discussion about a checklist that the city would provide, an inspection checklist, to all the landlords before inspection, and that it would be, you know, no surprises kind of a thing. Well, that's not spelled out in the ordinance. And also, in the ordinance, it talks about that landlords will be notified by certified mail, which of course is a standard and leaves a paper trail, but I think the way our city has been operating is that there have been phone calls and emails for more immediate communication, not just, you know, wait a few days for the letter. So I just want you to confirm that all those things that have been happening, even though they're not spelled out in the ordinance, it's our intention as a city to continue operating in that way.
Yeah, of course, we don't want to create any additional work for ourselves. We want it to be a very simple and effective ordinance. So for us to have the landlords know what's expected prior to an inspection would just make it more efficient for us when we're going to meet these people. I mean, just like with some of our other programs that we've implemented in the city, as soon as people know that there's a violation or that they have some correction that they need to make, they're usually very cooperative in trying to make those corrections. It's just a matter of getting that information out to people, and so that they, as you say, that they understand what needs to be implemented for them to be compliant. And we have been working with the Landlord Association to develop a checklist, and then what we've been doing after we receive the checklist is just making sure that we have a reference to all the code sections for which the checklist has been developed.
Thank you.
Counsel. I'm going to deal with the counsel questions first. Counsel, any more questions or comments on this?
My only comment is that this is going to be an asset for the city of Austin, and really something that we have needed for a very long time, and it will help us to control, you know, problems that happen with rental property. And it's important for us to do this. It's something that's done by many, many cities, and Holly and her staff, as well as the committee, have been interacting with other cities and trying to come up with the best kind of one that customized to Austin that will work in terms of the checklist, in terms of what's feasible to cover fee, and also fee structure. So this is, this has been very carefully designed.
Okay, ma'am.
You had your question.
I just want to make a comment, your honor. I guess one of the things that came up at the last work session that we talked about this, one of the landlords expressed a concern about, in the crime-free portion of the ordinance, it speaks of having background checks done on every applicant that they have for their rental property. I addressed this with Ms. Wallace, and kind of came to the conclusion that as long as they have a background check for the actual tenant, they don't have to keep background checks on all applicants on file. I guess for me, it was kind of a, an enforcement nightmare. I mean, how are we going to ever know whether they did a background check on somebody that applied or not? Create a huge paper trail, I would think. So as long as they have a background check done on the actual tenant, if there's ever an issue, they're covered for that.
And they also talked about fees for background checks. You can go to the BCA website and do a background check on somebody for nothing. That's free. You'll see if they've ever been in prison or incarcerated or on probation in Minnesota. I'm assuming that's all the background check you need. You don't have to get a federal background check. It doesn't say in the ordinance, but I think that would be acceptable. Okay?
It does, it does say. It does give some specifics as far as what's required for background checks, but that would be sufficient.
Okay, so you can do it for nothing, and it'd take five minutes. But there's nobody else from the council, do you?
I would just like to mention that for people to say that they didn't know, the Austin Daily Herald has reported this a number of times when we've been discussing it, when we did the registration part, when they always put it in the newspaper. Also, we have a city of Austin website. There, you can always get current information about meetings, what we're doing, and so I just get a little tired of people swarming in here when we're ready to do something and say they don't know. That's your job to know what's going on in your city.
All right. I don't answer her. Wait till you come up here. I can see you want to answer her. All right, ma'am, why don't you come up, you need to give us your name and your address.
Thank you, mayor, and councilmembers. Kim Fearing, and twenty-four oh four, Thirteenth Street, Southwest, and I live there, by the way. I want to talk about the ordinance simply for the fact, I don't totally disagree with it. There are some parts of it that I disagree with. I know that we have a problem in this town, but we also have a problem with owner-occupied housing in this town.
Yeah, we're working on that, too.
And I think, I think the investors or people that are trying to actually allow housing in town are getting picked on. I know, I know that we have a problem with what you call slum lords, and I get that. But I know a lot of investors that actually buy the properties, fix them up so it's something they would actually live in, and they're getting penalized. They're going to have to pay these dues, and they're going to have to pay for inspection fees and all this, when their properties are nicer than the one I live in.
No laws are passed for the best people. They're passed, I mean, that's every law that's ever come down. We don't pass a law for murder because most people are going to murder somebody. You know, it's the two or three percent, and it's, we've been through this with the landlords and all the meetings. That's why I say, we're covering areas now that we've covered five or six times. We understand that Austin has a very, very rapidly deteriorating housing stock.
They do.
We know that. A third of our homes in Austin, we figure, are rentals, and those are the ones that are deteriorating the most and the fastest. The best way for us to do something about that is to pass this ordinance.
Why would hotels be excluded? Like Sterling Motel is excluded. The hotel that was north the town, that had the bedbugs and it was...
That's not in Austin.
Those are excluded. We have a problem right by the old Tully's.
That'd be in Austin before we can cover them.
Sterling Hotel is in Austin.
There's a lodging tax for the hotel.
The one right out by, on the interstate, Ninety and Two Eighteen, that hotel.
This is a rental ordinance right now. It's a rental ordinance. There's a lot of things that does cover, that we'll get to eventually, but you know, it's a start. It's just a start.
Maybe Mr. Byram can help me out, but my understanding is that the commercial properties, the hotels and the motels are subject to other state and other kinds of licensing and inspections.
Yeah.
So we're not looking at those particular properties, because those are already taken care of by other authorities.
Pretty safe assumption, yeah.
Well, Mr. Byram could say a comment.
Well, thank you.
Yep, Mr., but Mayor Craig Byram could comment on that.
Great.
I think Ms. Wallace is correct, that if you are a professional lodging facility, an overnight guest facility, there are all sorts of regulations and health codes and requirements, and I heard mentioned over here, even special taxes that are applicable to what you do. And that is a different marketplace. That is maybe a different approach that one might take if we had those issues. I think that the mayor's comment is perhaps the most applicable, which is, just because you have a lot of pieces of the pie to attend to, doesn't mean that you never actually pick up one of the pieces and start to eat it. We need to start addressing the problem piece by piece and work our way through. And this isn't a legal opinion, but it is an opinion that this has been a discussion for a very long time, on a problem that has been known and documented and studied, and statistically evaluated, and the information has been presented to the council, to the public, and to others for a long time.
We should have done this a long time ago. We tried, I mean, finally, we're getting it done. Yes, sir, come on up here.
Also, Austin isn't the first one to do this.
Oh, no.
I mean, we're adopting this ordinance basically based off of an ordinance from Faribault, Minnesota. Rochester has the same ordinance where they charge these fees, and Albert Lee has it, so we're not the first ones, and most landlords, if they are in more than one town, have encountered this before. This isn't news to them.
Hi, my name's Stephen Carroll. Have property in Austin. Do any of you people on the council have property in Austin besides your own home? None? So you know how hard it is to do this job sometimes? You've been dealing with this problem. We just can't keep passing the costs down. Every year, we eat tax money that we have to pay because it's non-homestead. Every year, we have to try to keep it under budget because you want affordable housing for the people that live in our town. But yet, you think affordable housing is what? What do you think a three-bedroom house in Austin should go for at this point? Do you guys have a number?
Well, I know.
A nice one. I'm not talking to dump, because I don't own any. I'd live in any house I own.
How many do you own in Austin?
Thirteen.
Okay.
So how many, what do you think is affordable housing?
I don't know. I paid, I rented a couple of years ago, and it was expensive. I paid like thirteen hundred dollars a month, the three-bedroom.
Mine are like half of that, because I rent to people that need help. I do it for to help people. I have elderly people, I have disabled people. You know what? A lot of people do this just because it's something to help others out, too.
You don't make any money off of it.
You have to make a profit at the end of the year. You have to still pay the bills, right? I got to pay my taxes. You guys want your cut. The county wants their cut. But I don't think that charging everything down the road and making everybody equal, like she mentioned, is a fair deal. If you're going to bring us all under one roof, you're trying to conglomerate a lot of people that do good things for other people, and you can't do that. So if you want to pass your ordinance, go ahead, but you're going to have a flood of houses on the market. I know people that are slum lords, and they're already looking, saying, "You know what? We'll just dump them." Well, that's fine, too, but at the same time, do you want that kind of crap dropped on the city at exactly one moment? I know a guy dropped seven in the last month.
I think we'll survive this housing ordinance.
Okay.
I really do. I would disagree with your assertion, you know, what's going to happen. I think everything will be just fine. It hasn't happened in other towns. Why would it happen here?
This is Austin. Where else does anything happen?
Yeah, well, that's an argument, I guess, but I would disagree with you. Thank you. Ma'am?
Audrey Larson, and I live at two three oh one, Seventh Street. I have the, this building that they're building in my backyard. It's been very quiet, but I'm assuming with this new rental, there won't be, and I'm worried about animals.
What does a rental ordinance, why would it be wild because we have a rental ordinance?
I expect noise. I expect animals. I expect things going on.
I would expect that less when we have a rental ordinance than you would have before, because it's controlling, you know, it's trying to keep better people in better houses. Why would, why would that increase? Why would the bad behavior increase?
We would hope that it would run smoothly.
Take my word on that. I'll give you my word on that one. I'd be shocked. I mean, you can always get a...
What is the animal minimum for this rental?
You know, Brian, there's no, I don't think there's any animals aspect.
That's up to the, I would say that's up to the landlord if they allow pets in the...
City ordinance is three animals, three pets per house.
Well, I would not like to go out in my, on my patio and animals running around.
No, I wouldn't like that either. There's a guy you talked to right there, the police chief. Give him a call. They'll send officers over. They have traps and everything else.
We've called the animal person before, and we've not seen him.
You haven't seen him?
No.
Well, he can be...
Doesn't show up.
Okay, well, I don't know if he hasn't shown up, or maybe hasn't checked in with you, but you know, why don't you, Brian, you know, give Brian a call.
Give me a call, and we will help you out.
Yeah, that's what they're there for. I mean, there's, we'll help you with your problem. It just isn't directly related to, I don't say it's related to the rental ordinance. You're just frustrated.
Well, the animals are to be on leashes anyway, aren't they?
That's a separate law.
Yes.
It's city ordinance.
That's separate, separate ordinance, right. We'll take it. Brian will help you out, I guarantee you. You'll, you'll, you know, he'll do what he can for you, no problem. They've helped a lot of people out, and you sound like you need some help with those animals.
Right.
Right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? I thank people for their comments, but like I say, we've been working on this for seven and a half years, and it's, the probability you bring a new issue to us tonight is pretty low. Is it fair, you know, government isn't always fair, but this is the way, the cheapest way that we can figure to get our housing stock. You have thirteen houses in Austin. You're making a lot of money. You have a business here. Don't tell me that, you wouldn't have thirteen houses if you were losing your shirt on them. You have a business in town, and we're just trying to regulate that business. We're not saying you're one of the bad ones. I don't know anything about, I don't know you at all, but this is something that has to be done. And I hope for the council to give a waiver on it tonight. Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, and counsel, anything from you? Otherwise, we need a motion for preparation of the rental housing ordinance.
So moved.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then Jeff?
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
And then we need a resolution adopting fees for the rental housing ordinance.
So move the res, second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. I want to thank everybody that did come to speak, though, I appreciate it. Number nine is a motion approving an angled parking request for Webster Apartments with the owners being responsible for all construction and maintenance. Stephen?
Yes, as we discussed at the last work session, the possibility of creating angled parking within the public right-of-way for Webster Apartments, working with Chad Groh, owner-manager of Webster Apartments. It was agreed upon at the last work session that the apartment owner would be responsible for all costs associated with the construction, and also the snow removal, and ongoing future maintenance of the angled parking. So with those recommendations, we would recommend approval of the angled parking.
Counsel, anything?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number ten is a motion waiving the annual audit for the Blazing Star Trail account. Tom?
Annually, the City of Austin has asked for a waiver of a joint powers agreement requirement between the City of Austin and the City of Albert Lee to have an audit of the joint, of joint powers Blazing Star Trail account. Again, this year, it's kind of reliant on getting state bonding money before anything goes forward. So at this point in time, since it only had about ninety-two cents of interest for the last year, we request counsel authorize a waiver of the joint powers agreement provision, just like Albert Lee did recently.
So move the resolution.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Number eleven is...
It's a motion, it should just, a motion's...
Oh, I'm sorry, a motion.
All right. We need to do that again?
Nope. We're good.
All right. Eleven is a motion appointing Stephanie Potzma to the library board, term expiring December 31st, 2019. Need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Twelve is a resolution approving the participation in the voluntary 2018 Performance Measurements Program. Tom?
At this point in time, statute 6.91 still exists to allow entities to go through a performance measurement program like we've done the past couple of years. What this does is it allows you to get an extra three, four thousand dollars of local government aid. It's not huge dollar amounts, but we put something out on the website, or get a Survey Monkey type thing going, and have citizens respond to that, basically ten or twelve questionnaires, questions on what they see in the community. So at this point in time, we request counsel authorization for the resolution again, so that we can participate and potentially get a couple of thousand dollars more of local government aid.
Need a resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Councilmember Larg Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
A series of motions, thirteen, granting the planning and zoning department a power to contract for the removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A is 2101 Fifth Avenue Northeast, Estanic Property, need a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? B, 801 10th Street Northeast, Hernandez Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? D, 1208 11th Avenue Southwest, the Vu property?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? E is 1200 11th Avenue Southwest, the Graybowl Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? F, 2014 Fifth Avenue Southeast, Holder Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, G, 104 14th Street Southeast, the Flores Property, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, are any citizens here tonight that wish to address the council items, any item? I think you did a lot, they, we had a lot of addressing the council already. Reports and recommendations, Judy, we'll start with you tonight.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Jeff? Just want to say, we had a Park and Rec Board meeting, and the slide is progressing well at the pool, and with the weather, the way it was today, hopefully it won't be long we'll have that sucker open, and kids enjoying the new pool, so...
All right.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Watch for the City of Austin, as part of a public art project, will be sponsoring a city celebration, art celebration in Milton area on Wednesday, June 13th, so be watching for more details on that on our website, and there'll be other promotion out there as well. We're partnering with Park and Rec, and the library, and the Paramount Theater, and the community band's going to be playing, and, and there's just going to be a whole lot of fun things going on, and the events are free. People want to buy concessions or things like that, they'll have to do that, but all the activities and events that night will be free to the public, and everyone's invited.
Janet took mine.
What's that?
Janet took my announcement.
Okay.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Sorry.
Nothing, Your Honor. Nothing, Your Honor.